All right, good evening. Welcome to the December tenth New Market Planning Board meeting. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? So is a public comment at seven oh two. Next is review and approval of the minutes of the planning board November.
Make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes for November twelfth, twenty nineteen.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Does that mean the motion passes unanimously?
Jamie, did you abstain or?
No, I said aye.
So the motion was Val and the second was Grant.
Sue has a hard time discerning.
So you want to look at the minutes? Oh, it's not on the agenda, right?
Yeah, I just got those two to see if they can.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Rate Holdings LLC, Greg Byrne and Matt Lyle, public hearing for an application for site plan review regarding the addition of two studio apartments to a mixed-use building within the existing footprint and structure of the building. The lots are located at seventy-two Main Street, tax map U two lot fifty-three, and two Central Street, tax map U two lot sixty-eight, both in the M two zone. So we need to revisit what we did at the last meeting. I entertain a motion to accept the application as complete.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Val and seconded by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. So now let's open up the public hearing. Welcome. Please just introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Mike Seibert. I'm with MJS Engineering. I'm representing New Market Holdings. Matt is here this evening, just in case I can't answer any questions. So a brief description of the property. So this, just one small correction, that this only involves seventy-two Main Street as the site plan. So map U two lot fifty-three. It does not involve map U two lot sixty-eight as far as the site plan goes, but there is a parking easement that's on that lot, map U two lot sixty-eight, that is associated with, and it will remain in perpetuity. And Diane and I talked about that, and I'll explain that to you.
Are you having fun?
Yeah, I'm just double checking. Our system is saying that mikes three and five aren't on, but it looks like they are on. Sorry, just had to double check.
That's fine.
Too much. We wanted to make sure you guys were getting.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So this is a mixed-use, existing mixed-use building, and really just adding two apartments on the, you can call it the fourth floor, but it's really three and a half stories because it's kind of in the attic or in the roof of the building. So imagine, not a full story, but up in the roof of this building, there's two studio apartments being added there. There's already a commercial restaurant on the first floor, and then residential apartments on the second and third floor, and there's no change to those. There was a variance granted for that, and it was conditioned on this site plan. And so we've kind of identified on the site plan the, I guess you call them, the legal parking spaces or the parking spaces that meet the dimensional requirements, meaning nine by eighteen, generally nine feet wide by eighteen, and then the aisle width. And I've crossed out some of the spaces, particularly right here, that are just too tight to be qualified as legal spaces because you wouldn't really be able to back out of them. I mean, you probably can back in or pull in and back out of them if you do it, you know, three or four movements. But for the purposes of this site plan, I've identified those as not spaces counted towards the fourteen spaces, just to clarify that. And the clarification I made, this, my clients own this parcel, U two lot sixty-eight, and there is a parking easement on here, and we've identified the three spaces which are within that parking easement. And so that would go in perpetuity with this because it makes up the fourteen spaces. So when I say it's not part of the site plan, I mean that the lot itself is not part of the site plan. I didn't want that to be part of the site plan because it's a separate lot, that's all. But there's no real issue with the spaces being used and all that. There's an easement in place, and all that stuff is set up. So with that said, I think that's, kind of explains the whole thing, and I'll just answer questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions? So the only changes, there's no changes to the exterior of the building, and the only changes are you be restriping.
Yes.
Eventually.
Eventually. The parking lot's in
Difficult.
Not great shape. I'll say. And so I will add that note. I promised that I would put that note on there, and I forgot. And I don't, didn't mean to, but I will add it on there, and I saw that in the conditions, and I will add that.
So new changes not being proposed to the exterior of the building, does, have you already met with Mike Hoffman on life safety codes? So you don't have to put balconies on or anything?
Yeah, so basically.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just introduce yourself and speak to Mike. That's fine.
Matt Lyle. I own the building. So Mike Hoffman had said if we do an all-in sprinkler system, we wouldn't need to do anything else. So that's what we are planning on doing.
Perfect. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Diane, this complies with zoning unit, unit count wise?
Yes, so as a matter of fact, they needed to get a variance to add the two additional units because it didn't meet the density requirement. And they received that from the zoning board based on the representations made today. And it was for the density, residential density requirements.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just, for background, are the parking, so it says the parking, you're requesting that fourteen onsite spaces? For so, so you'd have two per, seven residential units? And that the restaurant users would rely on public parking and street parking. Is that a change?
No, not really. It's really, the public utilizes the off-site parking now.
Anyway.
So there's no real change to that.
There's no change in, so, because it said you're requesting that they be
Oh, true.
Be used for tenant parking.
I guess we're saying because of the addition of the new apartments, it raises the demand for the parking onsite. So we're now saying, hey, those spaces will be dedicated to the residential space, the residential uses.
So is the one ADA space, is that for the residents or is that for the restaurant?
It really could be used for anyone, so it's, it wouldn't be discriminatory.
The building.
The building, right, exactly. So the, we discussed this, the misnomer of the handicap parking spaces. There's, there's supposed to be an accessible route from a handicap parking space, which we don't technically have here. You don't also technically have that from your public way in town because of the steep slopes and so forth. But just so you know, I, there is a designated space there. And if you come out through this location right here, that probably meets approximately the handicap space. But this central, I have slope of central, not central, I have central street, would not really meet that, but, you know, it's existing. So it'll get you around to that. This is fairly flat here, so that would probably be the best route to cut around that side. But probably doesn't technically meet all the requirements. But the require, but the requirement of the ADA regulations is that there needs to be one designated space per twenty-five parking spaces on any one site. So that's what we did.
Where are our employees currently parked for the restaurant?
I don't know if I know exactly.
Yeah, I think they're parking off-street. Oh, I'm sorry. They're parking on the street. Two, the people that own the restaurant actually live in one of the units, so the majority of them actually live there, but the other folks are supposed to park on the street. They don't have a designated parking spot.
Is there signage for the residential spot?
Yes.
And then I, designated, because of the condition of the parking lot, I've also added posts, it's kind of in the center of the spaces to kind of line yourself up so that there would hopefully be fourteen spaces and not somebody parking at an angle or something like that.
Any other questions? All right, so we have a memo from Diane. If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion for approval with the conditions noted by Diane.
I'll make a motion to approve the application with conditions as never.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Bill and seconded by Val. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes passage unanimously. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next is a public hearing for an applicant. Jennifer M. Christopher. Owners of twenty Packers Falls Road, tax map U one lot sixty-four, and Michael A. Anderson and Kristen Blue, owners of sixteen Packers Falls Road, tax map U one lot sixty-five, and Valerie R. Shelton, applicant to transfer approximately point six-two acres from lot U one sixty-five to lot U sixty-four. Both lots are located in the R two zone, so. Yes, so Valerie Shelton is recusing herself as a board member, and we have the application. Diane, the application is complete.
The application is complete. There are a couple of requests for waivers that the applicant has submitted, and they're all very reasonable. And we would recommend the waiver's.
Okay, so let's.
Board is so inclined to do so.
Well, first I'll entertain a motion to accept the application as complete. Is there a motion?
I'm gonna take a motion.
Motion's made by Bill. Is there a second?
Second. Jane can have it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the application as complete say aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. So now we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you. Valerie Shelton, Appledore Real Estate, here representing the owners of the two parcels, U one sixty-five and U one sixty-four. The owner of U one sixty-four is here this evening as well, Chris Skyler, and unfortunately, the owners of sixteen Packers Falls Road are not in town. It's a pretty basic, straightforward application, boundary adjustment. Currently sixteen Packers Falls Road encompasses all of the main area there, and everybody should have their familiar packets. And then the Skyler's property at twenty Packers Falls Road is the yellow parcel here. The proposal is to convey forty-five feet of frontage along with a perpendicular line all the way back to the rear boundary from sixteen to twenty. But this will make both lots conforming. It will actually increase the conformity of the Skyler's property because now they'll have conforming frontage as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Right here and done, I will, I don't think we should talk, we need to go through the waivers. There's three waivers requested. From section four point oh six, survey exercise three, it's why the approval block, which should be sufficient for chess and return date. I have no issues with that.
I'm just curious, what, why request a waiver instead of?
Because the plans were already done.
It was already done?
Yeah. I mean, you could make it as a condition. I can just have them redo the plans.
Yeah, I.
Just make sure.
I thought the same thing, but I understand. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that waiver. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Bill, seconded by Jane. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Second waiver is a scale. We require, the plan is one inch equals forty feet versus required one inch equals a hundred feet. I agree that the forty scale is much easier to read. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
You made a motion to approve the forty scale plan?
Is there a second?
Second.
Jamie?
Jane.
Give it to Jamie that time. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Next motion is section four point.
I think the planner.
Usually when I get down the checklist for minor subdivisions or boundary adjustment, if it's not really relevant to the application, I click, I could check a box that's non-clickable, and Val had asked for the waiver, but in the past, we haven't required that.
This number three?
Yeah, those items under our current regulations fall under boundary line adjustment. But the planner has, I guess, rendered an opinion that they're not valid because these have developed lots of record.
I'm fine with that. That makes it easier. All right. Does anybody have any other, any questions relative to the application itself?
I just have a recommendation. You can't record without adding tax map and lot numbers to your title block.
Okay, thank you.
Not a condition at this point anymore, but for the owners, it may be helpful in the long term to have a monument halfway down that common line. But not, not a planning board requirement, just a suggestion.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the guideline adjustment plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, motion by, well, seconded by Jane. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Onward. Next is Eric DeWitt. Request for extension of the conditional approval for the site plan for a mixed-use development at eighty-one Exeter Road, tax map U three, lot one thirty-seven in the B one zone. The proposal was to remove the existing buildings and driveways and build a two thousand nine hundred and twenty square foot, two-story mixed-use commercial residential building with municipal water sewer. Site plan included associated parking drainage and landscaping improvements. Good evening, Mr. DeWitt. How are you?
Good evening. My name's Eric DeWitt, owner of eighty-one Exeter Road. I'm here to request an extension of the conditional approval. I encountered an extenuating circumstances when trying to complete conditions. Mainly the condition to get the NHDES sewer discharge permit. The preliminary designer who did the sewage connection didn't design it to DES codes. Mainly you are not allowed to have a sewer pipe across water main, and neither my final engineer nor the town's reviewing engineer caught that. So when I went to try to pull the permit, I couldn't do it. Since then, I have had my engineer redesign it. This morning, the updated plan was submitted to Diane and the town's reviewing engineer, and the fee has been paid for the engineer to review. We haven't heard anything back yet, but I need this extension in order to complete that as well as get those, that permit, the NHDES permit and the NHDOT excavation permit, which I can't do until the town's engineer signs off on the plan.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeWitt has made quite a bit of progress in the last few months, and we appreciate his responsiveness to the request of the engineer and helping move this forward. And I did speak briefly with Allison, who is the engineer from Underwood, and it looks like everything's in order with the new design. I guess they're double checking some of the calculations, et cetera. We're waiting for a formal letter from them to approve it. Also, we are, need to work with Eric on a developer's agreement. That's been sort of in limbo for several months because there was a question about the impact fees, and then the sewer issue came up. So I'm recommending that we extend it for ninety days until March seventeenth, I think the date would be, which will give us enough time to get everything in order so that we can get the plan signed, and hopefully, we can start construction this spring.
Yes, hopefully.
So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
I did have a question, if anyone on the board has experience, on how long it takes NHDES to respond to a permit and NHDOT. I know it took over six months to get the driveway move permit, so I'm a little concerned that they're going to drag their feet, and I'm not going to be able to get it.
When did you submit your DES permit?
I haven't yet. I need, I need to submit it with the engineer, the updated engineering drawings.
Depending on the type of permit, it's usually thirty days before they respond. They typically will send the applicant a letter notifying them that the application was either complete or not complete. They respond pretty quick. And then they have, depending on what type of permit it is, either thirty, seventy, or ninety days to issue a permit. And after DOT is, they have seventy days, and they are, they've been running way behind on that.
Yeah.
So that could take six months. They've been really slow.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm sort of at the mercy of
Absolutely.
The state agencies, so you might see me back here in three months.
Unfortunately, if that's the case, I have no, I mean, I have no problem giving you an extension if you're in that unfortunate position. Hopefully, things will work out better.
Diane, should, should we do longer than ninety?
It's up to the board, if you'd like to do six months, that's.
I'm okay doing six months.
I was not thinking that it would take so long with DES.
I mean, just to save time. It's really DOT is the issue because without, they ran into that at the.
We have the approval for DOT.
For the, for the driveway move, but not the excavation in the streets. And both of those permits need the updated engineering drawings.
I say for the sake of saving future.
Six months.
I mean, six months, it seems like a reasonable extension.
I would agree.
I think it's a good point. We want to make a motion to that effect?
I make a motion, no. Do I make a motion on to change Diane's motion?
No, no.
So I'll just make a motion that we do an extension for six months.
Great, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. To tie. All right, Sarah got it. Sarah made the scorecard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, chairman's report. I think the only thing I have to report is, as I think most of you know, we had the joint meeting November twentieth. Went well. We got some information relative to the gateways, and I think we're going to try to set up a subcommittee, Diane, sometime.
I think that would be in order. What's the board think? Seems to work pretty well.
Rather than have the whole board go through it, I think if we have a subcommittee, we can probably churn through it a little bit quicker.
And the task would be?
To look at some of the recommendations and possibly come up with some zoning changes to implement them and present those to the whole planning board, and then ultimately, after public hearings and so forth, present them to the town council.
One of the things they talked about, Bill, was on the north end, you know, about how small those lots are, and combining lots and whatnot, which is great, but it's nothing for us to do. You know, the property owners have to agree to make them, make it more developable, you know, so.
Well, solid non-conforming.
Yeah.
In residential use, not commercial.
There's nothing to prevent them from doing that now.
Correct, correct. I mean, at one point, there was, there were three or four of them that got together when there was a previous development proposed, and that's, that's what's still going to have to happen there. There's no, nothing we can enact that can change that.
No, what's difficult now is non-conforming lots. It's difficult even just to redevelop a lot into commercial.
Yeah.
Without having to, without combining other lots.
Also, the B one zone has a hundred fifty-foot frontage requirement, which, again, is non-conforming for most of the lots up there that are on smaller lots with more driveways. Of course, that's all subject to approval by the city.
Yeah, if we just back up a few years. So we, when we did the M two A zone, we wanted to also include the north
Yep.
corridor, and it, I think it was really more the council at the time that was kind of making, you know, pushing back on that, so.
Correct.
We really wanted to extend the M two A all the way up to the town line.
Which would have had a fifty-foot frontage requirement.
Well, then have different zoning that would allow them to be likely more developable.
So as a subcommittee, I'd certainly be willing to volunteer for that. I think we need, we'd want three members, right?
Three members.
I would do that with, no, you know, I shouldn't do that because I'm a property owner in that. I can come on as a public member.
Yeah, okay.
Does it alternate maybe?
Well, I probably shouldn't do it at all from this end side.
Yeah, because I have a, a interest.
So Eric?
Nobody else wants to volunteer now? Or just ask you to go home and sleep over it?
I'll do it if anybody else just jump in.
All right, Bill, thank you. One more? Jamie?
Jamie, was that you spoke up?
I was, I was going to go home and draw, put all your names in a hat and draw one out.
And there's resources available through the, through the contract with the consultant, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
We'll be working with them.
Correct. Excellent, thank you. So that's what I had to report. Any committee reports? Counsel?
Yeah, I'll just note that the town council appointed a second member to the Ad Hawk Riverfront Advisory Committee. And I think there's still at least one more at-large member needed. The public's interested in that. That's a project with the UNH students who are doing a capstone project to look at the river, developing the riverfront. And that's, the town administrator went to their kickoff meeting with their faculty, and he also mentioned at the last meeting that that project is, or that, that whole project is probably going to go on for about a year. So, yeah, this is. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's out there. They're looking for another, at least one other member before they get going.
I did meet with several of the students and got some resources together, and went through my files and pulled them out, and spent quite a few hours looking through all the reports and stuff, and cleaning information from them, so.
Thank you.
We started the data collection.
Anybody have anything else? Hearing none?
Actually, I'm sorry.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Can't cut it close.
I'm going to get out of here.
I said anybody, are you with anybody?
Just a water resource subcommittee did meet right before Thanksgiving, and we had a productive meeting, and we'll be meeting again in probably January. And Kyle and Gretchen was there.
Bill and Sherry agreed to serve on the committee.
And Bill, Art Sherry, so we have a group, and of course, someone from the conservation and Mikal. So we had, you know, good representation, thought it would be some interesting discussion, so we started the process. And they're looking to get some, how to interact together by mid-June, so. It has a short fuse, but hopefully, it'll be productive.
Beautiful.
Had a good meeting.
I'm up then. There we go. A big convention that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Filling in for Janice.
Is there a second? Motion's made by Jane, seconded by Val. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. All, Merry Christmas to you all.